I'd like to welcome y'all here tonight. We're just a couple of minutes away from beginning the meeting. Before we begin, I would invite you to stand and join me in the pledge, and then Mark Fugierus will bring the invocation.
May I come to you tonight? Thank you for all the many blessings that you bestowed on us, the individuals and the city. Lord, I pray that you guide us in all our decisions, help us to do what's best for the overall environment that we live in, and you bless us with this call to all get home safe.
Amen. Thank you, Mark. All right, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. This is tonight's regular meeting of the Springdale City Council, Tuesday, January 23rd, 2024. And our city attorney has an item to bring. Let's do that right after roll call, Ernest. Is that okay? All right. Roll call, please.
Mayor Sprouse.
Here.
Brian Powell.
Here.
Amelia Taldo. Jeff Watson. Mike Overton.
Here.
Mike Lawson.
Here.
Rex Bailey.
President.
Randall Harriman.
Here.
Mark Fugierus.
Here.
Ernest Cade.
Here.
Go ahead, Ernest.
Item number 11 on the agenda is an item that came to the committee meeting last week dealing with the raisin-removal of a structure of 1405 Overell Circle. I would request that this be pulled from the agenda. I was contacted by someone on behalf of the property owner today, and I've talked with Tom as well. We'd like to pull this from the agenda and give them an opportunity to take care of this. They've got a plan going forward, and if we have to bring it back, well, then we'll just bring it back. So if there's anyone here that's here for that item, for the raisin-removal of 1405 Overell Circle, that's the one we're talking about.
Sub move.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion of second to remove that item from tonight's agenda. Any other comment or questions? Anyone? Roll call, please.
Powell.
Yes.
Watson. Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus.
Yes.
Carry 7-0.
All right, thank you for taking care of that. Item four, comments from our citizens. If we have citizens that are here tonight that would like to address the council concerning an item that is not already on tonight's agenda, this is the portion of the meeting that the council sets aside to hear your concerns or your comments. If you have any, please feel free to make your way to the podium, clearly state your name and address, and keep your comments brief. And please understand that the council won't take action on anything you bring forward tonight. Is there anyone that would like to address the council concerning an item that is not already on tonight's agenda? All right, seeing none, thank you. We'll move on to item five, approval of minutes, council. You've had an opportunity to look those over. If there are no questions or additions or changes, I would entertain a motion to approve them as presented.
Sub move.
Second.
Got a motion of second to approve the minutes. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Thank you. Item six, procedural motions. What's your pleasure, council?
I'll move for both A and B.
Second.
We have a motion of second for both A and B. Roll call, Denise.
Watson. Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Carry 7-0.
All right, thank you. Item seven, appointments and reappointments. We're privileged tonight to be able to make some two appointments for two openings in our planning commission, and then one reappointment of an existing, of a current planning commissioner. Item A, I'll read these. Item A, a resolution making appointments to the Springdale Planning Commission. And you've got the information in your packet on the two individuals that we're recommending for approval.
Do the resolution pass?
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any other discussion or questions? All right, roll call, please.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus.
Question first. Mayor, is this doing all three at once?
No, this is just for the two new appointments, and then we will do the reappointment on those. It's a separate resolution.
No.
Powell.
Yes.
Watson.
Carry 6-1.
Okay, thank you. And as always, thank you to Jennifer and to Teresa, who are both willing to serve. These are important positions, and I really believe they'll do a great job. So thank you for your willingness to serve. Item B is a resolution approving the reappointment of Howard Austin to the Springdale Planning Commission.
Do the resolution pass?
Second.
Okay, a motion of second to approve Howard's reappointment. Any other questions or comments? Okay, roll call, please.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Watson. Overton.
Yes.
Carry 7-0.
All right, thank you. And also want to thank Howard for his continued service on the commission. Don't believe he's here tonight, but glad to have him stay on. Item eight, planning commission report and recommendations by Patsy Christie, Director of Planning and Community Development. Patsy?
Thank you, mayor. The first item is a final plat for I-49 Industrial Park. Planning Commission reviewed this. Final plat recommends approval. The title of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance submitting the final plat of I-49 Industrial Park to the city of Springdale, Arkansas, declaring an emergency."
Move the ordinance to be adopted.
Okay, we have a motion of second to approve the ordinance. Any other questions or comments for Patsy? Anyone in the room? Okay, Denise?
Bailey.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Watson. Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Move the merge clause to be adopted.
Second.
Harriman. Fugierus.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Watson. Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey.
Yes, ma'am.
Both the ordinance, emergency clause, carry 7-0.
And as always, the emergency clauses are included because we have pending actions on these pieces of property. The next item is a rezoning request for a 11-acre tract located at the northwest corner of West County Line Road and South Downham Road. The request is to rezone the property from Agricultural District A1 to low-medium-density single-family residential district SF2. The planning commission recommends approval of this rezoning request. Title of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance submitting ordinance number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning certain lands from Agricultural District A1 to low-medium-density single-family residential district SF2, declaring an emergency."
Patsy, was there any opposition to this?
I don't think so, no. It's single-family.
Move the ordinance to be adopted.
Second.
All right, we have a motion of second to approve the ordinance. Any other questions or comments? Anyone? Anyone in the room? Okay, Denise?
Fugierus.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Watson. Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Move the merge clause to be adopted.
Second.
Powell.
Yes.
Watson. Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus.
Yes.
Both the ordinance, emergency clause, carry 7-0.
Patsy, before you go to the next one, and I hope I'm not opening a can of worms here, because I'm just going from memory. But is there a parcel out there nearby that we zoned commercial?
Just to the north of it.
Just to the north.
Not the property that's right adjacent to it.
Okay.
But the property just to the north of that where you reszoned to commercial, yes.
Because I remember the owners of this property were against that. I just didn't remember if that had ever been changed or anything. So it's still zoned commercial.
It's still C2, but nothing's ever been done with it.
Okay, thank you.
The next rezoning request is the 10 acres that's adjacent to the one we just rezoned. Again, from Agricultural District A1 to SF2, single-family residential district. Planning Commission recommends approval. Title of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance submitting ordinance number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning certain lands from Agricultural District A1 to low-medium-density single-family residential district SF2, declaring an emergency."
Move the ordinance to pass.
Second.
We have a motion of second to approve the ordinance. Any other questions or comments? Or from anyone in the audience? Okay, Denise?
Watson. Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Move the merge clause to be adopted.
Second.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman. Fugierus.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Watson.
Both the ordinance, emergency clause, carry 7-0.
The next request is for a conditional use for a use unit 44, which is a mobile vending unit in a general commercial district C2 located at 1229 East Robinson Avenue. There's the location where the truck will be placed and the designated parking spaces for it. That's what the lot looks like. The planning commission recommends approval of this rezoning request with the following conditions. And cannot operate between the hours of 10:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m. No obstruction of parking spaces required for the operation of any other use on the site. Maintain on the site a minimum of three parking spaces designated for their use. Health certificate is required. Display the health certificate in a manner visible to customers. No obstruction of pedestrian or motor vehicle traffic flow. No obstruction of traffic signals or regulatory signs. No vending upon a public way. No sound devices that produces a loud and raucous noise in violation of the city ordinance or violate any other city ordinances in connection with the vending operation. Keep the vending sites clean and free of paper or refuse of any kind generated 20 feet of any vending stand, collect, and deposit into a trash container. Submission of approved gray water disposal by Springdale Water. Submission of an approved grease disposal method approved by the Arkansas Department of Health. And electric services must be underground, permanent services.
So in something like this, could that food truck be in any other location than where it's shown right there? And is it, does it have to? It can't be there over a certain amount of days? It has to be a mobile vending?
No, as a conditional use for a mobile vending unit, it is a permanent location, and that's where it's placed. And it has those three designated parking spaces that have to be identified for it all the time. If they are there for, you know, where they move and don't see any place longer than three hours, that is a different kind of mobile vending, and they have to get a business license permit for that. To put it permanently at this location.
The existing businesses there, they have access to sewer and water, do they not?
They do, yes.
Is there any reason why this is not hooked up to sewer and water?
Well, our ordinance doesn't require that a mobile vending unit be hooked to utilities, but they have to provide us with a certificate for gray water disposal through Springdale Water or some other approved method, and they have to have a potable water source that the health department will approve.
Who monitors that?
Usually the health department does. We require that they keep the health certificate current, and we have that.
A yearly health certificate? Or is that a, do they inspect it more often?
I can answer that question for you. I don't know how often the health department inspects mobile vending units. Yeah.
So Patsy, is this current location that's a car lot, is it in any way tied to that, or is it still staying in business there?
It doesn't, this conditional use doesn't require the existing business to stay there. The owner of the property has agreed to allow this conditional use for a mobile vending unit to be on this site. Now, if he leases the property out to something else, he has to maintain those three parking spaces and access to it for a mobile vending unit. As a conditional use, if we have complaints or problems with it, we can bring it back, have a public hearing, determine whether conditional use should be discontinued or allowed to move forward with other conditions too, so.
Okay, so is that conditional use? Is that transferable? Could somebody else come in and take it over?
It's to this vendor at this location only. Neither of which can be transferred. If this truck goes away and they want to put something different in, they got to come back through the process again.
Okay, thank you.
Move the resolution to be adopted. Second.
Okay, we have a motion of second to approve the resolution. Any other questions or comments?
Do we have someone that goes out and checks the underground electrical services after tonight?
Well, they have to get a permit to get it done, and so billing inspection will look into that. Now, they also have the option to use a generator if they want to. They are not required to hook to power unless they want to. So if they have an electric service, it has to be underground. If they choose to use a generator, they can't. Right. You can't run a extension cord from one place to the other way to operate one. Yes.
Okay, good. Any other questions? Anyone in the audience? Okay, Denise?
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Watson. Overton.
Yes.
Carry 7-0.
The next request is for a use unit, a conditional use for a use unit 28, which is a home occupation in a low-medium-density single-family residential district at 1117 West N Street. This will be a coffee roasting operation in a single-family dwelling. The planning commission recommends approval of this request with the following conditions. No alteration of the outside appearance of the residential structure, provision of a separate outside entrance for the business areas of the residential structure. No outside storage of materials required for the operation of the business operated only by the resident members of the household and shall not have any employees, concessionaires, or any form of operator or helper, whether such business is conducted on the premises or off the premises. Requires the use of vernary no greater than 30% of the total heated living space of the residential area. Generates no traffic, parking, and sewage of or water usage in excess of what is normal in a residential neighborhood. Will not produce any fumes, odors, noise, or any other offensive effects that are not normal to residential activity. Will not involve accessory structures. Stock and trade shall not exceed 10% of the floor area of the accessory use. Use will not require the construction of a duplicate kitchen or the addition to the existing condition. Will not require or cause the consumption of the premises of any food products produced thereon, and will not provide medical treatment, therapeutic massage, or similar activities.
Patsy, is this unusual being in that neighborhood? I mean, any neighborhoods for conditional use like this? Have we had very many?
We have, well, this is the first time, I think, we have a coffee roasting location. But we have home occupations in several places around town.
Monogramming operations, et cetera.
Sewing, quilting, that kind of thing. Music teachers, piano teachers, those kind of things. Even a home daycare, if they have less than 10 children other than their own, is considered to be a home occupation.
Any pushback at planning?
I'm sorry. I don't think there were any concerns at planning, no.
Is there any condition about signage?
They can't have a sign. Well, that's in the ordinance that sits with what a home occupation can be. It's already in the ordinance that you can't have a sign for a home occupation. Yeah. Yeah. So we don't put that as a condition, because that's already part of the ordinance itself.
Any other questions?
I move the resolution to be adopted. Second.
Okay, got a motion of second to approve the resolution. Or is there anyone in the audience that needs to speak to this? Okay, roll call.
Bailey.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Watson. Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Carry 7-0.
The last item is a conditional use request for a tandem lot split at 226 McCullough Drive. This is the Spring Creek Village project they've been working on for a couple of years now. The reason for the conditional use is so that it can be split for financing purposes in two separate tracks. Only one of them has the required minimum on a public street, but it will have a paved street up to it and creates a conditional use. Planning Commission recommends approval of this conditional use. Title of the resolution reads, "A resolution approving a conditional use at 226 McCullough Drive for Spring Creek Village is set forth in ordinance number 4030." I'm sorry.
Could you go back to the map real quick?
This is the one just south side of Emma, correct?
Right.
On the east side of town?
Right. The city sold the property to the developer to put this housing project. And I can tell you, through the last couple of years in youth, it's done, it's a better project than when we started. We've come a long ways on this one. But for financing purposes, it needs to be two separate lots. We worked out all the details so that the multifamily design standards can be met with each lot as if it stood on its own. It has its amenities. It has a lot of good things going for it. We do have in our CDBG program to build a bridge from the south side of this to go across the creek so they can get access to Dean's Trail. And so it's been a long process, but I think we've got a better project than when we first started.
Move the resolution to be adopted. Second.
Got a motion of second to approve the resolution. Any other questions or comments? Anyone in the room? Okay, Denise?
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus.
Yes, ma'am.
Powell.
Yes.
Watson. Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey.
Yes, ma'am.
Carry 7-0.
All right, thank you. We're at item nine, Finance Committee. And Amelia could not be here tonight. Jeff, I think you did that at committee. Do you want to do it tonight?
Sure.
Okay.
Item 9A has to do with the hiring of a construction manager or signing a manager agreement for pre-construction services on Jean George Boulevard. The Finance Committee approved that resolution or recommends approval of that resolution. And the title to the resolution is, "A resolution authorizing the execution of a construction manager," sorry, "manager agreement for pre-construction services on Jean George Boulevard, North 56th Street."
Move the resolution to be adopted. Second.
Okay, we have a motion of second. Any questions for Ryan? Anyone in the audience? Okay, roll call, please.
Fugierus.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Watson. Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Carry 7-0.
The second item from the Finance Committee has to do with the resolution authorizing the execution of an agreement between the city of Springdale, the city of Fayetteville, and the Arkansas-Missouri Railroad for a grant, is that what it was?
Study grant. Yeah, we were approved. The grant was approved, and this is a, this is a, correct me if I'm wrong, Ryan, this is an agreement that has to be in place as part of the process.
Okay.
That's correct.
Yeah. The Finance Committee forwarded this resolution to council with recommendation for approval, and the title to this resolution is, "A resolution authorizing the execution of an agreement between the city of Springdale, the city of Fayetteville, and the Arkansas-Missouri Railroad for administration of a railroad crossing elimination grant."
I move the resolution to be adopted. Second.
Okay, I've got a question first.
Okay, go ahead.
Ryan, so just to make sure on... For us, the resolution to do this has the Arkansas-Missouri Railroad's signature on that, correct?
Yes, it does.
And that is stipulating that this amount that we're providing to you that comes off the amount that the city's already committed to?
For the $3 million?
Yes.
Yes.
I just want to make sure that's in writing.
It will be credited. It will come out of that $3 million. Any... But this is just...
It's a study of the intersections.
For right now, it's just the match for us, correct?
Yes.
And Fayetteville. And then... But also, any improvements or any changes down the road can also come out of that amount.
This is just what...
All you're approving tonight is the money for the study. Yes. The match money for the study. Other questions or comments? Yes, ma'am. Please come up to the microphone, I'm sorry. Please state your name and address.
David Garnick. 5461 Elm Springs Road.
Thank you.
So, the resolution for a construction manager for Gene George Boulevard and 56th Street?
Okay.
This is for an agreement for that?
No, we've already done... We're on a different item now. We've already approved that.
Okay.
The construction manager for... That was the previous item.
Okay.
That was 9A, and this is 9B.
Okay, great. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thanks.
All right.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Al.
Yes.
Watson.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugirous.
Yes.
Carrier 7-0.
All right, thank you. Find my place here. We're at item 10, Police and Fire Committee, and Chairman Brian Powell. Brian?
Thank you, Mayor. Our last committee meeting, we had two items come before us. First item deals with remounting of one of our ambulances and using ambulance equipment replacement funds. The title of the resolution is, "A resolution to waive competitive bidding and to operate funds for equipment," and the chief is here if you have any questions.
Move the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second to approve the resolution. Any other questions or comments for the chief? Anyone in the audience on this item? Okay, roll call.
Watson.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugirous.
Yes.
Al.
Yes.
Carrier 7-0.
Second resolution coming before us is some more equipment for thermal imaging that's going to be... Come out of Act 833 funds, and the title of this resolution is, "A resolution waiving competitive bidding and authorizing to purchase of thermal imaging cameras for the fire department."
Move the resolution be adopted.
Second.
We have a motion, a second to approve. Any other questions or comments? Anyone in the audience? Okay. Roll call, please.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugirous.
Yes.
Al.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Carrier 7-0.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we still have one item on the Ordinance Committee report, and that's Chairman Mike Overton. Mike?
We had one item, Mayor. It's an ordinance authorizing the city clerk to file a lien for the raising and removal of structures within the city of Springdale, Arkansas, located at Gibbs Road, Nichols Road, Springdale, and declaring emergency, and I believe the city attorney's had communication with the owner on this, and the owner might be present tonight.
That's correct. Council, back in June... I'm sorry, July 11th, you passed two ordinances authorizing the raisin removal of some structures located at 7744 Gibbs Road. That ordinance was forwarded to the property owner. The time period went by, the structure was not removed, so the city went in and removed the structures per the ordinance. The ordinance before you is pertaining to the cost of the raisin removal, $15,268, I think is the amount. And Mr. Cousins, the property owner, is here. He came to see me a week before Christmas, and he wanted to inquire about the amount. I kind of explained to him about the process, about placing a lien on the property, and he expressed an interest in perhaps making some monthly payments towards that amount. I told him I didn't have the authority to do that, but if the city council was to authorize it, that it would... We would have to do it by promissory note, and I also suggested that he... If he still wanted to do that, that he should come to the meeting tonight, which he is here, and probably be a good idea to show up with a handful of money as well.
One quick question. Ernest, it doesn't really... Whether it's a promissory note or a lien, it's still a cloud on the title of the property, so it really doesn't make any difference.
On the raisin removal...
As far as... I'm talking about as far as the effect on the property, whether it's a promissory note or there's... If our lien is perfected, it still runs with the property. It cannot be... The property can't be sold, et cetera, as long as there's a cloud on the title.
Well, you've got to have the lien. That's what the lien is.
I know, but if there's a promissory note, there's still a financial obligation that has to be cleared up before... It does not have to be cleared up before it be sold?
No, a true promissory note would be outside of that, and I think that was kind of his point, and also why I told him I didn't have the authority to do that. Normally, on a much smaller scale, if we were to put a cleanup lien on a property, say for $300 for mowing, and the property owner came in, we would cite them into court and let them make payments through the court, but given the fact that this is $15,000, we obviously... I didn't feel comfortable doing that and advised him to be here tonight.
Oh, first of all, we didn't discuss this at the Ordinance Committee, did we? We just talked about the one that we took off the agenda. We discussed this one?
No, this one didn't... These don't come to committee.
Yeah, so this is the first time we've really talked about it.
As far as the forcing the lien.
Other than we did the... We approved the raising.
Yes.
But now you... After we approved the raising, it's already been done.
Yes.
And now you come back and want to place the lien.
Yes.
And it's for $15,000-something dollars for the work that we did. In other words, it's our guarantee of getting paid, hopefully.
Yes.
Or not guarantee, but it's our... It's our way-
Statutory mechanism.
Mechanism to get paid.
Yes.
And what Mr. Cousins is wanting to do is not place the lien on the property, and he would like to just enter into an agreement to pay it out and not have the lien placed on there for some reason. Maybe he's wanting to sell it, or who knows?
That was the substance of our conversation on December 18th, but I'll let him... I don't know what his position is tonight, but he's here. I advised him to be here tonight.
So...
Go ahead if you have any clarify... Clarification or anything, or what you're asking the council to consider.
Thank you for allowing us this opportunity. So, we've owned this property since the '70s.
Yeah, a long time.
So, apologize for the mishap of the mess, so to speak. I just learned of this two days ago, so we definitely apologize for this happening. So, we will definitely repay the city for the expense of this happening. We would very much like an itemized bill from the contractor.
We do have a copy of the invoice in the packet. I can't speak for the billing inspection department. They do get a... They do get a invoice from the contractor who performed the work. They've been paid, and that's in the packet. It's page 81, red... Red page 81 in your packet.
Thank you.
I don't know if they do a more detailed breakdown than they do, but Tom might be able to answer that, but it's a... That is the invoice that's been paid.
Thank you. There is some major septic issues. Septic tank issues.
There you go.
So, that's being addressed at this time. So, of that $15,000, that's going to have to be taken care of. So, Ernest, we'll get back to you on that.
Tom, you might want to mention... You might want to mention this. There was some... There was some allegation made that the septic system was damaged. I believe Tom would like to address that.
Yes, Ernest. I actually went out there with the contractor we hired, who's insured, and I've asked Mr. Cousins to provide us with documentation of how it was damaged. He came into Ernest's office and said that his tank had been dug up. We don't dig up tanks. Anybody who's in the construction field knows that we pump, crush, and fill tanks. We didn't do that. It's not part of my itemized list of things to have done on this property. So, there is a tank out there. The lid is there. I've had... I've taken pictures and provided those to Ernest to show the tank is there. So, the allegation is that the tank's not working, or it was dug up. Then when I was out there, he says the tank is working. He's concerned that somewhere down the road, it may be a problem. So, I've asked him to provide my contractor some definitive, you know, proof that the tank is damaged or is not working, and to this point, he's not provided anything of that.
We have those... We have those videos and pictures, and those will be provided.
So, Mr. Cousins, it's my understanding you're wanting to pay the $15,000 or some part thereof by a promissory note. That's what I understood from the city attorney.
We want the documentation of all of those bills. Yes. Yes.
But I thought I understood the city attorney to indicate that you wanted to sign a promissory note to pay at least something. Maybe you don't think you owe the full $15,000. But is there some reason that you're wanting the lien not to be placed on there?
That's correct.
Because even if we place the lien on there, you can still pay out whatever you think you owe.
That's correct.
Yeah, you can still pay what you owe.
That's correct. That's correct.
So, is there some reason you don't want us to place the lien?
No, I don't... I don't care. I just want to pay it out to get it over with.
Yeah. Yeah.
We could just go ahead and approve this ordinance to place the lien, and then you can work out something, hopefully, with-
That's correct.
-Tom or the city attorney.
Yeah.
He's rightful for what he owes, not that it's necessarily that amount. That's correct.
It... I've stated on the record that we take the position we have not damaged the septic system, and Tom's been out there and looked at it, so...
We put lien over.
I agree, but I just wanted... I didn't want to leave that out there as that's something we were going to work out with later, because as far as we're concerned, we pass this tonight, we're done.
So, is it as simple as placing the lien and-
Yes.
-him making payments?
Yes.
And once it's paid in full, then we release the lien and move on? That seems pretty simple.
Yeah, we in fact... I don't... You probably remember the 983 West Sunset drama we had. That's now been paid, and a couple of weeks ago, we actually filed the releases of those liens, so...
Tom, have we let anybody pay out? I'm over here. Over here. Is this unusual, or...
This is unusual. Most people have not asked to pay it out. With talking with Ernest, I don't see the advantage either. I mean, six doesn't want to have to either, he's going to have to pay it.
We're not agreeing to an amount, period.
Well, you don't have to agree to the amount.
Yeah, I understand you're not agreeing to the amount, but this is the amount we're going to put the lien on for, because that's what we've spent.
Right.
So... So, whatever kind of action comes after this is... That's out of our hands. We're going to... The ordinance is going to be for us to approve this lien, or this action. If it's approved tonight, we'll be approving this lien, and then whatever gets worked out later is whatever gets worked out.
And Mayor, if I can, I mean, that's what's owed to the city for the work that we hired out to be done. If anything comes about that you can prove that this contractor has damaged the septic system, and he's found guilty of having to repair it or replace it, that's something that you get with the contractor to pay back. It wouldn't be the city paying you back or forgiving you of this lien.
So, you'll go after the contractor.
Yeah, you have to go with the contractor. I hire people who have license. We didn't... No city employee came on your property and did any damage to your property. A contractor who may have been hired by the city may have, and he agreed that if you could prove that he damaged your property, then they would do something, if you haven't done that.
They did some digging, and they wasn't supposed to be doing any digging.
There's plenty of videos and pictures that show that, so...
And we had a hole there with a lot of water in it, and it looked like sewer water.
Again, it looks like sewer water. Again, this isn't the time and place to basically talk that. We're asking... You're asking to put a lien? You don't want to put a lien, or you want to pay it, or put a lien, which is irrelevant. If you guys are going to go further with it, you really talked to Redline, and he told you that when I was there that day.
Who's Redline?
Redline is the contractor who did the work. I had him on the job site, and their contention is they didn't dig up a septic tank. Your contention is they dug up a septic-
I move the resolution be adopted.
Let's... Let's... I think Ernest needs to read the title, and we'll entertain a motion.
Yeah, I don't think I... I'm not sure. You might have read it, but I want to make sure we read it for the record. An ordinance authorizing a city clerk to file a lien for the raising and removal of structures within the city of Springdale, Arkansas, located at Gibbs Road slash Nichols Road, Springdale, Arkansas, and declaring emergency.
I still make the motion to approve the ordinance.
Okay, we've got a motion, a second. Any further comments or questions? Anyone? Roll call.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugirous.
Yes.
Al.
Yes.
Watson. Overton.
Yes.
Move emergency clause be adopted.
Second.
Bailey.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman. Fugirous.
Yes.
Al.
Yes.
Watson. Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Both the ordinance emergency clause carry eight zero.
Thank you all. All right, we're at item 13. Any comments from council members?
Thank you, Public Works. Y'all worked hard during this winter storm event we had. Thank you very, very much.
Does that include the director?
Absolutely.
Y'all did a great job on the streets that you treat. Yeah. You didn't do a very good job on the streets you don't treat, but that's okay. Colby, we got... I had a question from Colby, and I just wanted to make sure we covered this right. The intention on the railroad grants is to pay it... We set aside $500,000 a year for that agreement, so I think the intention by the discussion would be for us to pay that out of that $500,000, to pay our match of this grant. Is that what everybody understood, and we're good on that?
Yeah, I think we just need to make sure it's on the record that where that money's coming from, either the general fund or the $500,000 we budgeted, and the dollar amount, the $81,000, needs to be on record, too.
All right. I think the intention... It's in the resolution, is it not? But I don't think we had the source on the... In the resolution. So, we... The intention of the council with what they approved is to pay, not out of the general fund, but out of the budgeted set aside for the railroad agreement. Okay?
Which is coming out of the general fund anyway.
It is, yeah, but it's a budgeted amount, so...
Are we going to be meeting on Monday, since it's the 5th?
Says the next city council committee meeting will be held on Monday, February 5th. Is that right?
Off next week, then?
Yeah, we have an extra week, or an extra Monday this month. So, enjoy your week off with nothing going on. Any comments from city attorney?
No, sir.
I don't have anything. We have a motion to adjourn. We do have a motion to adjourn. Without objection, we stand adjourned. Thank you.